It is six thirty on Monday, April twenty fifth. This is the public hearing agenda. I'm following the order now with our opening exercises. If you will please pause down. Everyone, crosstalk. So often we come to be asking for things and forgetting to thank you for all the things we have. I want to thank you for the greatest country in the world that allows us to even be here. So that we can have our concerns addressed and so that we may act accordingly. Please protect all of our person's families who are always there taking care of your people the way you would take them care of us if you. Keep us always in your grace and deliver us all the same way we got here tonight. Thank them down. Amen. I present the reasons to sit by here in the United States of America. And to the Republic of British Sands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Reunification. First of information that these compliance if you put this information out. Notice that the CDN will provide for all these media and first of course. Well, Commissioner Brown, proud. Yes. Commissioner Clifford. Yes. Commissioner Brown. Here. Commissioner Lawford. Here. Commissioner Knowleskin. Here. Commissioner Folsen. Here. Commissioner Moon. Here. Well, your commission. You got no one that's signed it. It's a thing. So I'm having item number four ordinance number twenty twenty two dash zero one. Rehealing ordinance number twenty twenty one dash zero two. And twenty twenty one dash zero six wastewater collection system use and rate ordinance. The floor is now open for anyone wishing to speak. Um, well, this is just a public hearing enough to go to. Um, I think there's nothing else for anything I know. Number five resolution number twenty two dash zero three wastewater collection system use and rate resolution. The board is now open for anyone wishing to speak. Item number six, resolution number twenty two dash zero four. With your twenty three annual budget regulation. Resolution, the board is now open for anyone wishing to speak.
Um, if they can ask for stuff in person. I'm sure probably because it doesn't have, um, increases that manage to work through that. Yeah, uh, I think that's important. There's, I've been checking out the paper. I just, uh, do just to compare to their, um, fact about seventeen percent. And, um, also, and he was great article for that, and then it was part of that few parts. And we got to, um, I go to TPS and we got next to the third one, the few parts of that. And also I believe that, um, you know, that when I put the commission on that first day, I went to the third. All of the points were steroids side and we don't need to fill the plus number. No, no, not. But, uh, so, um, and I thought the best thing to do was to sell that part. We put some more on the five to the part of the exterior. And that part is giving these party, right, if you, uh, a lot of our new equipment, uh, they are the, uh, they use the power. So I feel like, um, the employees deserve to have a better facility. And I think as much as we can afford, we will in fact have a nice facility. Uh, where they will help it, including attention and in fact we have to include it too. And make the life of all that people just want. And let's thank the people in the third law and they should learn that they're good people. But then I asked that Brandon, the public comment on the capital detail. Was that quick correction or quick revising that the bank is now, did you see the violation during the fourth quarter? That they would change other than some part of the grant and use. And often things that we still have as a problem that that is forward, but it didn't make that. Just, I was just trying to get along with the general budget. And we could just talk about the real level of the quality back to the school. Yeah, it's not a good, a good job. Well, I'll see you about that too. We went for seven years with the other program. And things fell behind. And that had a house and we didn't do any maintenance because of the use of a car and things, things, the water and stuff. And, um, we thought with, uh, EPA, we had to come more at. We thought keep our facility in our price range. We got almost ninety five compensation. You can't do one year. You've got to do a couple of years just to bug. And, um, I'm really proud that we did that, um, by pressing and going through the footpath. And that's hard. We didn't just start writing that area only three hundred dollars. So we need to be quiet and be comfortable to keep the pollution out and the twenty second water, and putting water out and all that out. So it's always not the one. That's fair. Um, and we're getting there that our rate for a lot of other rates will not be there. And then yes, we did have to go up. But our mother always said, yeah, we don't have to do much. I think that's the end of that because it's not so small and I have to do it. And any further comments?
This one. This is actually good, I boy. This is actually good, I boy. Um, with all of the interest that was happening with the patient, and completely hanging out in the old history, through this crazy rigging and we couldn't get it. We need to make sure that we start telling our stories as the reason for increases. And, and, you know, it's a different term, different term in the topic. So anybody looking at the okay lives, I mean, I don't like that understanding why the jury did it. It's easy to do it. Just know it's point, I know it's in a great state. But, therefore, in a term of doubt, especially that it's not me that's driving the decision. It's the jury, you know, the jury. Most of it is just sort of like it's a bad thing.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'm going to a hearing. We need public hearings for April one to December. We are now immediately going into the regular commission meeting on April twenty fifth. And I'm going to.
Captain Peter, if I may, I have a question. Is there any position I consider moving up or executive session number one? That could be giving any information that will impact or influence that. Or please. I'm not aware of what it's going to do to the executive section. Nor am I. So I'm going to move it away and I thought it was more than that. What it has to do with will stay or that you want to stay or the good stuff property? So I guess I'll have to stay. I wonder if it's better if you want to find a better.
All right, back to where we were. I'm following the order, six thirty. Our regular meeting and I'm going to. Very rare, the free reparation, I can do it and don't judge. First of information that these compliance if you put this information out. Notice that the CDN will provide for all these media and first of course. Well, crosstalk. Commissioner Brown, proud. Yes, Commissioner Clifford. Here. Commissioner Brown. Here. Commissioner Lawford. Here. Commissioner Knowleskin. Here. Commissioner Folsen. Here. Commissioner Moon. Here. Well, your commission. You got no one signing this? When the board's introduction, it's firefighting, time group, that you invited.
Just real quick, I say, you know, thank you for all the hard work that Tom did. And then, and all the work that I heard from, and kind of the team that you tested. And the paper, you welcome the man, the all the men, looking at patients too. Yeah, I appreciate it from you, and welcome all the insights that you're coming with.
So again, uh, yeah, there's three firefighters we'd like to introduce to you all. Um, staff and fire department, glad we got them. Hopefully they're going to be here for a career, at least they've qualified. No, yeah, no. So this is John Estrinview. Uh, B ship. This is Barrett Holling. He is A ship. Charles Kent. He is B ship. Jamal Frazier. C ship. Sean. Nolan. A ship. And Chris Ellington. C ship. Ellington and John were taken out, uh, by the first school. Came on and was fired after, um, being successful in Columbia. And these four gentlemen, the little hero, were direct hires of the fire crew. So we're glad to have them and, uh, hope they had a long time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you guys. What's more than working with y'all?
Thank you too.
Captain Peter.
Give the stuff off my dashboard.
Captain Peter, um, article. There's left, we are back to bring in a question. So I will go ahead and bring it from now because you maybe number eighteen, then a correction session number nine. Again, the session. Oh, and go for it. I will say then.
Can we, yeah, but, um, it's very unnecessary urgency or whatever it was. If you can, if you can be done by the sun. Of course, you're not adding to this method. There's a little thing around me.
For the, for the session, for the, since the E D N information that might impact or any of that to, um, in the special session. I'll leave on, would you help with that? Well, um, in fact, those are, why red that the opinion that they're coming to that thing. Why they would be in a separate exception before, I'm sorry, I'm not those included. The mentions, the new or direct exception after number eight. Either as you said. I wish we'd gotten it on that. Well, crosstalk. No. Commissioner Brown, proud. Nope. Commissioner Clifford. No. Commissioner Brown. No. Commissioner Lawford.
Uh, I didn't hear anything, no.
Commissioner Knowleskin. Yes. Commissioner Folsen. There. Commissioner Moon. No. Motion, Karen, is four to three. Um, I need that phone. I'm sorry, thanks. The consent agenda, regular commission meeting from March twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. Uh huh. Is, um, making, they made an motion to approve the consent agenda from the regular commission. I spoke and Folsen has seconded. Any discussion or changes? Well, crosstalk. Commissioner Brown, proud. Yes. Commissioner Clifford. Yes. Commissioner Brown. Yes. Commissioner Lawford. Yes. Commissioner Knowleskin. Yeah. Commissioner Folsen. Uh, yes. Commissioner Moon. Yes. When you hear sixty one. Michelle Lawford on contract removal. And we got a handout about that in our second. And if you manage to take it away, we'll be direct.
Sure. So the, uh, the terms of agreement, or was the, uh, commissioner, uh, mission previously approved, uh, the timing of the agreement over here? It was through the thirtieth of November, twenty twenty two. And, um, Kyle Michel and I have been, uh, interacting. We've been our island years in Columbia. And, uh, wanted to kind of give you an update on what is going on in October when we're drawing on. So with that, we'll turn over to how it is done.
Thank you. Great one.
You guys come up.
Commissioner. You say something for the time. Uh, thank you, Kyle Michel. And I have been, uh, first, I've been doing, working with him, uh, last six months. A lot of people say, oh, I don't know, I don't know, it's a lot. Yeah, I did that. But, uh, yeah, so I wanted to give you another, for the time, I mean, who's been working on this project. It was quite, quite a challenge, quite an opportunity. It is a challenge because the project is so big that a lot of the money that they will, that we will afford. It's sort of money that's going to follow the first one. They want to undo all the damage that we've done. And it's all, if they don't try to, they don't manage. It's kind of, kind of finding money for it. The, uh, funding for it, it's, oh, there's a lot of activities. Uh, things on the food. Water share restoration project. Then start changing down the pre-division. Uh, so what we are, what, what we have done, we have covered the, uh, the water. Too much of it. We have covered all the people who have, who have contributed to this. Because individually, everyone, you've gone past educating the experts, the home people. And there is right now, in essence, continuing to have this conversation, kind of the way this process is beautiful. That allows us to, um, get them on. There's, there's sort of a, the big north star out there, the Harper Fund, American Rescue Plan, of course. That hasn't been waiting in the legislature this entire session. The Senate, they're good at beginning of the session. The business review, ask for, somewhat early in the session. Take away time plan. But then the Senate goes to the House and the S A. And then the House goes to the Senate. So at this point, I don't know. The, uh, say it for you right now, is there's a one point four billion dollar difference. I mean, House budget, not our, House budget and the Senate budget. And so now, kind of everything is waiting in line behind the legislation class. Because everything that's the part of the solution is involving, that's the one point four billion dollar difference. I mean, the House budget, the Senate. That difference lies in, Senate mostly does is one billion dollar tax rebate. And the House has made it there. The Senate has a one billion dollar tax. Lord of that, which is, uh, the House is six hundred million dollars. There's a four hundred, the Senate has a one hundred million dollar larger question. Had the one billion dollar rebate, which means, and they go to their top on a number, the House is here. Senators one point four billion dollar waiver. Which means what they can fund under their budget is greater. Arca funds of there. And as part of the negotiation, if the Senate announces, you know, obviously, we just give you that, you don't want that, there's no problem. Okay, and why don't we put some of that money, if we can spend that Arca money on that, so we can get that over into Arca today? And that will allow us to bring out that, and so Arca bill becomes something that they're putting you as the budget negotiator's tool. Is it possible that they're going to pass an Arca bill that designed in a law before? The commission, very essential, make laws, the P, the, there's a P X, possible. Make, it would feel very, very similar. It's also possible that those folks don't get resolved until we get the pass. Make laws and we get into, to budget negotiation, which will have to be done by, of the problem I have for the. So that's, that's, that's where the Arca bill is. The Arca bill is nine hundred million dollars for water and water in the house floor. Nine hundred million dollars for water and water in the city. It's, it makes you factor that out and they come up with, um, then they allocate sixty percent of what's up over. To water systems. And forty percent of it to small. Watch the amount of money for thirty thousand and more customers. One hundred and sixty seven million. For, you have thirty thousand customers, where there will be two hundred and eleven million available. As it stands today, we're competing for money in that. Yet, we're not moving the House budget of the project. And there's a lot of pressure to put us over on market. Because we don't need to spend, they don't want to, they don't need to be in market. So we could walk through a project. But we also have a lot of support from the House for putting us in a non, necessarily walk through a project, so that we're in the bottom of the line. By not being. So we, we really have a few avenues, when we put this funding. And in both of those avenues, we'll ask for a full amount of funding, I think. If there are lots of already being, we'll ask for, we'll ask for everything, we'll ask for everything. Our number is two point two minus one point eight, that's in place by the town. Or we'll ask for that amount. We'll ask, we'll, we'll ask for that amount in the Arca, if we don't get it. So that's, that's where we are. All of that, we're in and done. We've worked extensively with, um, stakeholder, city, county, county, and all of the stakeholders. I don't think there's any more. Um, the, the, the completion, that we've got a public service, it's kind of taking a lead in that. Because, Shaker has a hand with it, and the past season, Joe, he said, we will talk to legislators. We will hire nothing, Joe. We will sit down, we'll call them in, we'll call out their, this one, we will take them on, we will, if no one else will. So we're, we're also working, the commission does want to work with the C H A, because they have federal one. But again, this is hundreds of thousands of dollars. And it's hundreds of thousands of dollars that can only be spent on this and this and this. You have to have your design affirmative done for that. Permanent stuff. So we have, we have a number of resources that are all in, in play, and then they're suing. And then staying in touch with all the people that connect there, which is, I believe, is where, um, process.
No, the only, the only thing, um, what, uh, Mr. Jones referencing as far as the federal one is. I gave an update on S C, he had three nineteen party funding last month. We received hot off the press today. The invitation to move to the full application process. So again, that, that's due by June third, so the commission can expect to see something go forward for next meeting, the twenty third of May. We used to turn it out this afternoon. Now we have to move forward and there are much more specific things they want out of the full project application. So it'll have to be brought to the commission to be able to approve the twenty third of May to be able to submit by the third of June and before. So we'll be working diligently to make that happen.
The notice, the notice, your plea. On, on, pardon. That's a public announcement that we, that's going to through the show contract.
Notice, you work through.
To extend, um, just like I own, um, the contract, you know, to make an avocation to extend the contract, I second it, so not going to be open to the session. What? The notice. Okay, so fine, there's, there's y'all, but I don't want to see the money. More than three dollars. Okay. There's y'all. Commissioner Nelson. And, who's your job? I'm sorry, we're not going on the kind of fixing funds for that gets obvious to support. Are you wanting, Mr. Shaker, with our obvious support, that you don't get one? Oh, okay. And you know how to do that?
We are.
I can't agree with that. Apparently, you're, because you come upon us.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I agree. And we agree. Uh, the way it works is, um, you don't know all, you are the obvious principle. If you hire someone, you need to have them have, that those are the, the bar.
That should be a nonstop project. Donna?
Seventeen percent, seventeen years, nothing.
But that's a fair lot of cars in 2020.
Yes, and we're paying taxes because prior to reasons did not want to adjust the rate at all because they were too afraid of not getting elected or reelected. Man, it's not true. And we have to spend my dreams to kill it.
Yes, I don't want to be taken care of. So, yeah, I asked the committee to agree with the law plan that we need to make this very clear. That was one of the issues that happened in 2020. That, and the substance makes me, there are a lot of people who sometimes don't even know why it's happening. And if we can explain, make it very clear that this is something and it's something living in itself. And you have to have certain principles to live, wait to protect ourselves from this. You know, you have to have it, but you have to do it for, so, so, I mean, very important to review some of these. Yeah, because like, when I talk to people about the piping of things that happen around, you know, in the public domain, but the piping is older than I am. That's, this means here is the issue. So we still need those type of things.
And then, um, the ability for the P S Ds, if we not have the valuable money sitting around here at cash port, you just regular turn, so if we don't contribute, the people who do run this money to get these main projects done, if they decide to call on the money that we don't have, then we're up out of P S D. And then that's shot.
Yeah, so basically, when we borrow money, there are covenants within there that say we have to make this stuff in a, uh, we would establish points that are going to keep us maintaining the systems moving forward. And that was, uh, we went into detail of classing by the debt service coverage rate. Now, the type of way I think of it, kind of a backward looking mechanism, but that's based on my experience. We're not the only one who's looking at this. Obviously, the credit weighted waiting agency, um, since we owe money to, uh, the S R F, if we owe money to the U N T A, we have to provide updates. And so, like, last July, I believe I mailed out, we were actually, um, included in our bond rating point to stable or to negative outlook, and obviously to the, uh, the relationship. So, obviously, not only do, you know, the commission and the staff and the other people, but obviously the credit or credit weighting agencies that establish our bond rating, there are no plans that are, that will raise the dividend and taking certain.
Anything else?
Yes. Who would be responsible for giving the tax payers, whether it's the rate payers or tax payers who think amazing on what things this is, um, about tonight? Who's responsible, probably the level of how the ladies could be provided?
And, and so last year, we'd be those had sent, um, a letter, um, explaining that. Um, I, I can give you an example of what that looks like, but maybe something similar than, um, uh, that did the first July, twenty twenty-two, this was the, and, um, the, the changes to open the, the volume of the thing.
Would it be a letter that took the floor or something like that?
A letter to do.
And, uh, how do you like, how like it? Not that I'm too bad. Okay, so, how would I do that?
Maybe we, we put it on the really good. Absolutely, we put it on the website, we put it on the Facebook, um, and then, um, we try, the website communicates with customers as far as the case.
Do you know what this is this time?
Okay, I'm, I'm just wondering if this is, I don't remember.
Any other comments on the question?
I'm, I'm concerned that he, um, uh, like, the one in the final part, is that mostly commercial or is it really?
It's more like, it's all.
So, he's not a commercial, if I can tell you, they didn't just consider, definitely, people, everybody, not know, you know, you know, um, have the, uh, much of, I guess, all of them, okay, well, the one block, and that's supposed to be in our beautiful, we got that, uh, I think that much, including all the liquid rates, I think.
Um, I would have, I would have to go back and look, but, um, I, I couldn't beat the, the specific percentage.
Maybe it's larger, the level of, from one to two, because their costs are going up two. Well, and I'm not quite as young, but less than a year without any question at the cross, and you can, you know, uh, when we go back to the, um, twenty-four, that's the end, or, uh, is it, is that true?
Obviously, we would, uh, we would be able to go back and look at that. However, um, what, what we're going to be seeing is, within, within the budget for fiscal year twenty-three, obviously, we need to continue our efforts with Willman, you know, with consultants and work with, uh, C W S as far as the rate methodology justification, and we have funds appropriated in fiscal year twenty-three to be able to hear that that effort. Um, obviously, the older, um, twenty nineteen study had rates in there for five years through twenty-four. Okay, that's why we're in something with the, uh, rates of twenty-four. And the methodology behind that is when twenty twenty-four, we're working towards clarifying methodology justification with C W S so that they knew five-year rate study and then completed, and that that would be accurate. Obviously, um, we can initiate a city of policy to staple there and be able to produce a new, um, rate study that has methodology and rationale for, um, C W S, or that should end with this.
And then rates setting sell out.
So that's, so the twenty-three, this year twenty-three will be, um, starting the effort with C W S from the last rate study, moving forward twenty-four, twenty fifteen to twenty-four, moving to use the five-year study, and Willman, the Congress, the Central Commission, these are capital project. This is what we're trying to afford to be great.
And what's fifty percent increase in treatment cost, and how do you expect?
Yeah, I mean, they, they did not have, they did not anticipate, I mean, the inflationary, all of a sudden our largest line of expenditure goes up, um, that significantly, we do have to be able to afford that. That would not hopefully be important.
The menu is increasing their, increasing their rates to a place with nine, and that's, uh, five point one-nine per month. Well, you're looking at a, a normal customer paying six dollars and fifty-three cents more.
And this will be your, this will be the second go around, I'm not, I'm not, I'm really quick, ask. Can you please repeat that, two dollars and what?
I suppose. It's, uh, six dollars and fifty-three cents.
From C W S?
No, from the menu.
Okay, I know, I'm different. And, here again, we knew about the cost for processing the problem, we knew that, we had that information, we have the bond council coming to talk to us, we have the finance people coming to talk to us, we've been given what the rate resolution needs, it's several, and we have eighty-four customers. We have one-inch pipe, we were told their monthly base card would go up to thirty-four ninety-eight for twenty-three. It's really forty-eight oh-nine, we were told for twenty-four, it would go up to thirty-six seventy-three. In actuality, the business is forty-seven thirty-eight. So, Mr. Hoffman, where are you, one-inch pipe residential customers with forty-eight of them? And where's the merchant ones that are thirty-six? Because that is a wallet that, you know, has not been explained by, um, debt council or debt consultant or who that, or there is one.
If you have a one-inch water pipe coming into your home, you need that much water, you're thoroughly well off. It's in the larger homes, a regular home only needs a three-quarter.
Are they county folks, the county folks?
They're all our folks, they're our folks.
Okay.
They're our folks, they're our, they're our customers.
I, I know that, but, um, requiring as to, you know, sixty-seven hundred of our customers, their base card is only going up by approximately ten dollars a month over the next two years. However, we've got eleven folks that are giving this huge wallet, and there's an active mission there that's not been explained, that is a surprise. So, you know, I, I think it's an important one, and, um, and it's thirty-six businesses that are impacted. And then.
So, as part of the, um, well, I'm sure the, the last resolution of both the waste order election ordinance, or, I'm sorry, the waste order use and rate resolution, and what was the budget, were attached as part of the package for last year, which is this. So, that, that's what went out to the commission of the last package, that's what we advertised, that's what's been on our website, and that's what's been on our, um, Facebook. How, however, we communicate with our customers, this has been, that has been added back.
In the future, when we're giving information, would you mind letting us know if you change the date to get the draft, or we could be good.
All right. Any other comments?
Hi, Mr. Hoffman, if you got a one-inch pipe, you got a twenty, you want to go and get some of this out of that. Yeah, you probably don't know this many people.
All right, well called, both of you.
Mr. Brown Crouch, yes. Commissioner Porter?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Holton?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Harry, Sparky.
Resolution number twenty-two dash zero four, fiscal year twenty-three, annual budget resolution.
All right, so, uh, if you look, number nine, um, was a proposed agenda mission where it falls for the waste water collection system proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three. So that, that was, uh, number nine, um, and that was an agenda mission proposed by Commissioner Holton.
Oh, I can't get the sound, sorry, I, I put over nine, sorry, I'm done. I'm going back to nine, sorry, proposed wastewater collection system, proposed budget for twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three.
Where's the mysterious about?
Um, well, that's just, I'm sure there's been a lot of, you know, a lot of conversation, and you contacted me about this, so, asking me how, uh, what you were asking to, perhaps that question was just maybe set down instead of the freezer, and we ended up, uh, still, it was there. It was basically a proposal to reduce the waste order package funded by, uh, five hundred thousand dollars to reduce the, uh, amount of rate increase associated by the, um, wastewater rate increase resolution, so.
Right, and just for attending, this is an email that I sent separately to commissioners that suggested us looking at having eight point five percent rates increase to approximately four percent by, by looking at why not do the value and make these adjustments. Um, personally, we have seven hundred thousand dollars in revenues coming out of maybe eight point five that come into this next year, so I asked for us to look, make some checks. Obviously, this issue is down due because we just passed, or the commission evidently passed a new rate heat ordinance, which will bring in revenues of seven hundred thousand, but this issue is new. So, this is going to go on, it's going to go up to.
Yeah, I think that's.
So, we had a very, that's, that's, uh, two facility, there was a couple of number, uh, number two, I think, the back there.
You're, you're definitely, you're voting that we already know.
So, we already, yeah, had that, so, that's, that's, and, uh, people who are having.
Resolution number twenty-two dash zero four, fiscal year twenty-three, annual budget resolution.
All right, so, um, I appreciate the commission's willingness to commit three ways of meeting committee meetings starting last October, beginning in twenty-one, so, this will be fiscal year twenty-three budget resolution. Certainly, where we had enormous amount of information provided about the I B discussions of the way we need to make meetings. This is a different process, uh, for the annual budget in the form of a resolution. Also, a different annual budget document that's designed to align with the annual monthly financial reporting provided to members of the commission with yearly base revenues of ventures, details of the budget versus actual figures. So, in summary, I believe the district made enormous strides during this fiscal year twenty-three budget process, and that's a part of a renewable process in fiscal year twenty-four, um, but we should help all that to happen.
I make a motion to approve the resolution number twenty-two dash zero four, fiscal year twenty-three, annual budget resolution.
I have a second question, I need. So, we're sharing the questions. Yeah, and while I curtail the hard work on the budget on scale and identity, um, this study was very different from previous, based on P S D budgets, where there's less than one year, twenty-five years, forty years, fifty years, seventy-five years, a long, long time, this was real different. And for the length of the asylum, for the customer, for the rate payer, it's not understandable. So, I certainly personally missed the explanations and the prose, and, um, you know, that the town passed their budget last week on Thursday, and, and the mayor provided a, a one sheet, or, I think Alan has referenced several times, um, a one sheet, here's what we're going to do next year, here's where your money's going. That's just real nice to have, and lets everybody know, the vehicles we're buying, there's what we're doing at Silver Creek Road. We don't see that tonight, that wasn't, you know, what's supposed to come along, the folks to look at. So, I am the one who preferred to be his budget, and the, the prose, the pictures, the discussion, the explanation, the middle fun versus wastewater fun, all those things were very much, were very much appreciated on this. Um, a lot of our line items, we want to be way, way, way up, especially attorney fees, I'm definitely without which else, um, these are, we've been along the lines of the goals, is that correct, Wallace?
Correct.
And then, I, I had some questions that I can want on the instance, um, I got some to check, where are building costs? What cost does it, like, our engine in Charlotte, where that's in the pressure, kind of, I don't know if you got it. So, you know, I can quite see it, and people. Thank you, Commissioner. I'll say, the accident, I could, uh, whether, we have a lot more color, there's a lot more thought on information than we have on that, or, or, I understand that the plan, but nothing to say to that, a couple of years ago.
So, right now, the plan, we, they have until December of twenty twenty-three to be able to, for that to be at work. So, it will be, um, uh, this week in twenty-four budget, that's the plan right now.
Yeah, I, to be clear, I was not referencing the latter part, I referenced the other strip, but, so, we're talking about. You know, and I'm just, in terms of one page, here's what we do next year. And I don't know how, that's a fun, and we want to hasten. No, that it actually is, uh, I was like, one page, that's, I know, I heard you're writing down, like, why?
Well called, both of you. We are number ten, resolution number twenty-two dash zero four, voting for officially year twenty-three, annual budget resolution. Yes.
Mr. Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Porter?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan? Then, Commissioner Holton?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Harry, Sparky.
Number eleven, proposed Bali Beach contract for wastewater transportation.
All right, so, within your packet, um, you will see the proposed Bali Beach contract for wastewater transportation. Having reported to the City of Bali Beach, the Council, according to this contract, we're meeting on Tuesday, twelve to April twenty twenty-two, and based on the recommendations of the Willman rate consultant. Um, you will see the increases associated with volumetric, the base charge in, um, in line with Willman study. I referenced it before, and that we will continue to engage a rate consultant, it's in the Bali Beach, and make sure that what is happening, um, everybody understands the, the rationale, the methodology, and how that moves forward. So, as the district goes through to the preparation for fiscal year, um, twenty-three, the rate study performed in twenty-four, um, Bali Beach, C W S, District, um, we will be, um, working together as far as, uh, how this looks and why the recommendations are really off. This is a five-year contract, so, uh, it has been reviewed by the routine of both entities, uh, but the city and the district. It's in line with the general term for the previous five-year under the sun back in twenty seventeen. So, we're seeking permission to authorize the contract and then, um, provide that to Bali Beach and the Beach Board.
I make a motion to approve the Bali Beach contract for the wastewater transportation, adjusted, designated by an accountant, Scott Brown Crouch, can you, any questions?
It's good that we're taking separately, the wastewater transportation, yes, the City of Bali Beach, but you're targeting a major increase of thirteen percent, and then, we have four years to involve in the purchase of the proceeds. And I just really feel like that's gouging, unable, and, um, unable, so, the expenses that come on, that they have gone out, and that's just like, just, so, can you hear that?
And so, again, the, the proposal being pretty designed and flying with, uh, recommendations from Willman.
And also through fire council for Bali Beach. For the special? Well called, both of you.
Mr. Brown Crouch? Commissioner Porter?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan? Then, Commissioner Holton?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore? Looking at this to learn.
Proposed Bali Beach contract for wastewater maintenance.
Okay, so, um, the district has, um, has the city's port station program in the system, so wastewater improves know the real-time status of the structure over there, um, just as the district sixty function stations, you can see the conservative function stations for the City of Bali Beach. The district needs to dispatch a wastewater crew member for the E L R for an emergency, just a program on the technology, the I P A S, so these issues can be addressed quickly. Contract uplands and costs associated with roofie maintenance as well as emergency power situation. This is a five-year contract, and it's been reviewed by the routine of both entities, and it's in line with the general term for the previous five years from the time back in twenty seventeen. So, we are, um, seeking for a motion to be able to authorize the contract executed and send it back to the City of Bali.
I make a question. Hold on a second, the question?
This is actually, we have to help with people, power maintenance, and that's, that's, so, every year, so, I sort of agree with all of these costs, and actually, the constellations, depending on.
Anyone else for comment?
This is just a question. We had so many new agreements, got the E L B, and they, they were very, one, and the others, and it has a very, pretty, uh, been included as part of it.
Yeah, so, what do you see as far as a routine dispatch, a, 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 or a dispatch out there? Does it all increase in line, direct, often, in, in, getting these in line with, uh, a five-year?
I know, and that's, that's been quite, five, two, one, is the thing, I think, right?
Thank you.
I'd say, um, well called, both of you.
Mr. Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Porter?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Holton?
Yes. Number fifteen, fire department interlocal agreement for automatic aid.
All right, so I'm very happy to report in the town, I'm glad, seeking membership to the regional automatic aid group, and so that would make them the proposed sixth member, in addition to the city Charleston, North Charleston, St. John's Fire District, and, or P S D, Main Island, P S D. So, what we're doing is, um, I mean, so this has been reviewed by legal, and it's very similar to the previous interlocal automatic aid, and we're seeking a motion to authorize the fire chief and the district manager to execute all the legal documents that have been with the interlocal agreement. And I know the chief's been working to be able to try to understand whether we're all going to go sign them, so. So, last time was at the fire museum, might get some press, um, you know, before, uh, we make one up. Obviously, this has to go around and team the word, and find by all of the, uh, single representative for all state. So, it is a process to get that through, but, but, sir.
Actually, we have the fire room, we'll have six copies, and we'll go down the line, each of us, full time.
Do you have, like, any problems?
Do you have, like, any follow-up? I make a motion that we, um, approve the fire department interlocal agreement for automatic aid. Well called, both of you.
Yeah, right.
I just want to share one thing, anything that has happened on the, out of the theater, you guys, this, this fire department, the P S D, the, the, the man?
Well called, both of you.
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Porter?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Holton?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
I'm fourteen, much different management report.
All right, so, we got a lot going on in the district, can you hold on, any questions? Can I get through a report, and we'll try to field some answers from there. So, the district had an special Dr. Highway event, it was a Saturday night in April, the next doc, who participates Saturday, the eleventh, if you, we meet B A M before the following, and move down to the vote. I appreciate everybody's help to keep the I M clean. The district's theme building event, it is, uh, this Thursday, twenty-eight people, at one P M in the May, fire station number one. Uh, I appreciate the participation of the commissioners, and it's very delightful. Uh, please let me know if something comes up, it comes down on this Thursday, the plan right now, we have, uh, I have not heard, uh, one, some one commissioner, so we're planning for six commissioners to participate with their staff, and, um, the event will benefit James Island House, which was represented from James Island, out there. It's going to be to forty participants, um, and we'll be splitting up into eight different teams, with five, um, each team consisting of five men, members, to build a blank for a rate cost. Uh, the team will be, uh, we're all on the same team. So, within your packet, you will see the, um, summary of the financial report. And in there, um, what I always try to look at is where we are versus the target. Now, this is recorded through March, so, that is nine months through, we're three quarters of the way through this for year twenty-two, and so, the, the target is seventy-five percent. So, um, that, uh, when we, when you're going through that, that seventy-five percent, um, total actual general fund expenditures, um, year to date, are the six million, three hundred ninety-eight thousand, six hundred one dollars and forty cents. And that is right at seventy-two point eight-four percent, like, seventy-three percent, which is right about on target for seventy-five percent through nine months of fiscal year twenty-two. Um, we're working with finance, the department head, uh, the chairman for the fiscal year twenty-two budget amendment.